Good morning and welcome to Inside Politics. I'm Natalie Brandt. Well, the November election now just one month away, believe it or not. We are continuing our Inside Politics mini debates this morning ahead of the big day with the race for Seattle City Council Position 8, a citywide seat that's currently open. The candidates are housing activist John Grant and labor leader Teresa Mosqueta, both joining us this morning. Thank you very much for being here. Well, this is a race that has council members divided. To give you some background, the seat has long been held by veteran council member Tim Burgess, seen as a moderate on council. And now you have council members split over who should be the next Position 8 council member. Council members Sawant and Herbald have endorsed you, John Grant, and the rest have endorsed you, Teresa Mosqueta. So, starting with Grant, if elected, how will you fit into council politics? How would the council change?
So, I think that we have a real incredible opportunity to have a voice for the community on the city council. You know, recently, we saw the up-zone vote for the university district, and there was a proposal to increase the affordability requirements by about 1%. Now, that's not much, but it would have resulted in a lot more affordable housing. That council vote actually voted against that amendment, 6 to 3. Now, that is a real problem. I think that we need to build a progressive block on the city council so that we can push for a stronger affordable housing agenda.
Well, thank you so much for having us. As you've heard from me before, I've lived in this area my entire life. I'm an advocate, I'm an organizer, I'm a fighter in the labor movement. My parents were organizers and educators as well. I think what I will bring to city council is the ability to work well with others, be collaborative, and progressive. I've delivered on our progressive values. That's why I have the support of Attorney General Bob Ferguson, Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal, because they've seen me in action, working to defend workers' rights, immigrant rights, and stand up for the health of our community. So, I think right now, especially in our country, we need people on city council who are going to protect the rights of everyone, stand up for economic justice, look at homelessness and housing issues as the public health issues they are. And with me on city council, I know we can move forward, protect what we're so proud of here in our city, but also work well to bring in that community voice and get progressive policy change done.
So, more on affordable housing, which you mentioned. Mr. Grant, you've proposed probably the most aggressive affordable housing plan, calling for a 25% affordable housing requirement on new development. Ms. Mosqueta, you've said that that's not realistic. So, make a case for why or why not.
Well, I think it's one thing to be bold in what we call for. I would love to see 25% affordable housing, but the reality is, it would be challenged in the court. Our current statute and our constitution don't allow for it. And in fact, San Francisco tried to pass a similar measure. You know what happened? They got stalled for a year and a half because the developers didn't come to the table to develop the housing that we need. So, I'm calling for us to move forward now, create the housing that we need now in our community. I want us to look at available land through community land trusts, work with nonprofit developers, and get the housing that we need. I'm a renter, so this is personal to me. I just got married a month ago, and we've been looking to try to buy a house. But in this city right now, there is not enough housing across the spectrum. For middle-income families like me, for low-income families, we have to create the housing that we need now. So, that's why my proposal is broad, it's progressive, it's not just bold without action. I have multi-layered approach that actually creates the housing we need today.
Yeah, so, I think that this is a real huge difference and a big choice that voters have to make in terms of deciding the future of the city. There are many cities that have imposed much higher affordability requirements on developers. In New York City, it's 25 to 30%. In Issaquah, the requirement is 30% for large projects. So, 25% is actually not that wild, and it would work. The problem is that this really comes about who you're going to be accountable to. Now, I'm really excited because this means that, you know, we can really push an affordability agenda, but you have to look at who's supporting, you know, those political candidates. I've taken a pledge not to accept any money from developers. My opponent has accepted donations from folks like Matt Griffin, who's the developer for the Washington State Convention Center. This is the largest real estate deal in our city's history, and my opponent has accepted donations from him. I think that's a real problem, and we need to elect a community voices to the city council to push an affordability agenda.
If I could just jump in there, Natalie, I think it is important to look at who's endorsing us. I have over 200 endorsements from across our city, progressive leaders throughout our community who want us to create affordable housing now. If we don't work with nonprofit developers, folks who want to hear the community and the community need, we're not going to create the housing we need. I'm the only Democrat in this race. I have the Democratic endorsement from the King County Democrats, every legislative district, and I have community leaders who are calling for affordable housing. This isn't about painting broad swaths or assigning blame or pointing fingers. We need to work together to create the housing and community assets that we need.
And in wrapping the first portion of this mini debate on air, I'm going to give you just a brief closing remark to address this question. You both are considered progressives. I mean, different groups, and the Stranger newspaper has described this as a race that could really divide Seattle's left. So, in summary, in about 20 seconds, really describe how you guys are different.
So, I think that for my part, we're hoping to bring a real community voice to the city council. Over about 92% of our donations have come from democracy vouchers. And I don't know if folks know this, but this has become the most expensive city council race for a primary in our city's history. And a lot of that is because hundreds of thousands of dollars of outside money has been spent in support of my opponent. She's accepted donations from downtown developers, and I think that that is the divide. It's not about who's more progressive, it's about who you're answerable to. My pledge to not accept those kinds of donations means that I'm going to be answerable to the public. And I think that's what we need at City Hall, folks that are going to look at the neighborhoods, look at our communities, and fight tooth and nail for them.
Quick response.
So, I think honesty and integrity matter. We've seen that from the national to the local level. I have been true to my commitment not to accept corporate donations, and that is true today. About 80% of our dollars came in from the democracy voucher program, which is getting people turned out to vote and energized in this race. I have over 200 endorsements from folks who are not only progressive, but they work well with others. I have over a dozen small businesses throughout our city that want that voice on council because they know they're going to be heard. I have advocates for seniors and kiddos who want to stand up and create a community that's thriving, that's healthy. I think it's important to bring lived experience to council. I'm a woman, I'm a person of color, and in a year where we see record numbers of women and people of color standing up to run, this is what it looks like, so make sure that our voice is represented on council and that we bring a healthy, collaborative approach to how we govern right here in the city of Seattle.
So, picking back up our conversation, currently, the mayor and city council are negotiating the $5.6 billion city budget. So, if you were on council today, what changes would you propose, starting with you, Mr. Grant?
So, one of the big opportunities that we have is to really get a head start on addressing our homelessness crisis. We are seeing a situation where we're sweeping people from corner to corner to corner. And quite frankly, those people exist. We need a place to put them. We need to get them inside. So, what I'd like to see in the city budget is to bring back the employee hours tax to go towards affordable housing. That's something that we could decide this year and bring in tens of millions of dollars to build a permanent affordable housing.
And what is that tax for folks who aren't?
It is, yeah, good question. It's a tax on corporations, basically. It's a business tax, yeah.
We're going to get to more on that in a second, but your response.
I'd be interested to hear how that happens through the budget, because I'm pretty sure that's an initiative that he's talking about. What I'd like to do in the budget, if elected, is actually move forward with creating the supportive services that we know homeless folks need. They need mental health counseling, substantive counseling, and case management services. The folks that I've talked to who provide the health services, provide direct services, say it's not just a room, not just a door. We need to make sure that folks have the comprehensive holistic health services that they need. I just came this morning from a memorial service from the Seattle firefighters who put four more names onto the wall down in Occidental Park. And they talked about how they get called to emergency services, but they also are split between having to respond to so many folks who are calling 911 because of emergency services needed to be provided to the homeless population. That's not what 911 is supposed to do. We shouldn't have our firefighters having to act as primary care providers. So, I think the budget could actually invest in medical units, additional comprehensive services that would allow for paramedics to go out with a case manager and provide the needed services to our homeless population at the right time, at the right place, with the right person, in addition to the permanent supportive housing that couples with case management services, permanent supportive housing that has mental health and substance abuse services.
So, you touched on what was going to be my follow-up, which is currently, we have about $63 million allocated to homeless spending in the current budget. How would you spend those dollars differently? Ms. Mosqueta just gave a couple of ideas. What would you do differently?
You know, I used to work at an agency called Solid Ground, which is a social service provider. And I've done homelessness prevention services, and that's been my life's work is around those issues. And what we know is that, you know, we're spending a lot of money and not getting a lot of results. I think that what I would like to see for our human services budget, to take a step away from what's called the rapid rehousing program. This is where they take a homeless family, put them in a market rate unit, like $2,000 a month, they have a shallow subsidy, and then that subsidy goes away. It sets people up for an eviction because a homeless family can't afford market rate rents. We are gearing up to spend millions of dollars for these programs, and I'm not convinced that they work in Seattle when the rents are as high as they are. So, I'd like to repurpose those funds to create more permanent affordable housing. I think that that is the best use of our dollars.
So, now to small business or business in Seattle overall. The business community here has sometimes criticized city council for regulations that, what they say, make it difficult to do business in the city. And I've heard small business owners say that they feel like they don't have a seat at the table. Do you think that's the case, and what would you do to change that?
So, I've met with small business owners like Cafe Avole down in Raynor Valley, North Star Diner up in Greenwood. And what I'm hearing from small business owners is that they really want, you know, a voice at City Hall. And I'd be interested in actually creating a stakeholder group or a commission of small business owners to advise, you know, the council on legislation so that the council just doesn't just, you know, roll out legislation without that input at the front end, because what I'm hearing from folks is that they feel like they're shut out from the conversation. And we have to support our micro-businesses that are throughout our city. These are businesses that have four or five employees, but they are the cultural anchors that make our neighborhoods the interesting and unique places that they are. So, I think we need to do more to support them.
Ms. Mosqueta.
Well, I've met with folks at Ventures and at Main Street Alliance, about a dozen small businesses throughout our city, most of whom are women-owned businesses. And what they tell me is they want to be heard, much like our communities of color and our low-income communities. I want to make sure that small businesses also have their voice heard in city council policies. That's why I'm interested in advancing a few policies that I've heard directly from small business owners, like making sure there's additional capital grants so that people can get their business off the ground within the first three years, like making sure that there's additional technical assistance and somebody to help them through the regulation process. That's why I'm calling for an office, a small business, a liaison into our community. I'd like us to do what Portland is doing. They have a Portland Mercado, which allows for people to create their goods, their crafts, their food, and then sell it in small tiendas. That's why I think that as we create the city of the future with all the cranes that are in our downtown core, actually incentivizing the creation of small square footage so that more small businesses can get their business off the ground, especially our women and people of color business owners.
Do you agree with the criticism by some that Seattle City Council is not friendly enough to business?
I think that many are saying that they want to have their voice heard. So, similar to what I hear from low-income communities and communities of color, people want more opportunities to engage with city council. And first and foremost, they want those ideas to be generated from the community up, not the reverse. And that's how I've always done coalition building, from working to pass the minimum wage and sick leave initiative to helping to pass health coverage for all kids in our state. We did that by working directly with those affected, then drafting the policy and passing it. That's what I will do with all our small businesses in Seattle.
And Mr. Grant, you've proposed a tax on corporations like Amazon. So, given that proposal, how do you think you could also be friendly to all business in Seattle?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's real opportunity to support small businesses, but we have to also acknowledge that for those very large companies like Amazon, Expedia, they are having an enormous impact on our infrastructure. So, I think that, you know, Seattle gets to benefit from this economic growth, but it also gives the city some leverage to make sure that those private companies are paying their fair share, so that our transportation system isn't being overtaxed by, you know, having too many riders, that our housing market isn't getting flooded with, you know, wealthier folks. I think that we want to accommodate for those people to come into the city, but that means requiring affordable housing. That means putting, you know, these progressive taxes on private companies so that we can expand our bus services, so that our city doesn't get choked.
And you've expressed earlier in this debate that you think that that proposal taxing big corporations is unrealistic.
Well, I think that it doesn't give us the revenue that we need right now. What he's talking about is an initiative to the people. What I would like to do is actually act with the tools that we have as city council members now to get the revenue to create affordable housing and to generate more housing options in our community. That's why I've called for us to bond against existing housing levy dollars, which some other council members have supported, like council member Herbald. I've called for us to also bond against future MHA dollars, and I think that gives us the money now.
Aside from bonding, your stance on the idea of impact fees?
Oh, I think that impact fees are something that we should look at. We have a growing city, we are growing up. We need to actually make sure that the infrastructure below our city-level streets meets our needs, our sewers, our sidewalks, our streets. But we also have to realize that it's not going to happen immediately. I want every piece of revenue that we can get at this city. I want it to be more progressive. Tim Imman's legacy is still living alive and well in this city and in our state. We have to push for more progressive revenue, which I will also do at the state level when it comes to an income tax and a tax on capital gains. So, I'm absolutely interested in looking at impact fees. I would support that. But what I really want to do is look at the revenue that we can get now as city council members.
And if I could respond to that, so, what my opponent is proposing is a bond. A bond is a loan. I mean, it's not a new revenue source. The housing levy already exists. And so, what we know is that there are 4,000 people sleeping outside unsheltered. What we need to do is to build thousands of units of deeply affordable housing if we're going to address this problem. We know that the Trump administration is not going to be here to help, they're here to hurt. The state of Washington is not going to come in and help us either. We have to create local revenue sources to deal with this crisis because we need to treat it like a crisis. My proposal would bring in $160 million a year to build 5,000 units of deeply affordable housing in five years. That would effectively end unsheltered homelessness. I've been a homelessness advocate my entire life, and I can't be more excited about this proposal, and I would love to lead that initiative at city council. My opponent does not support this, and I think that's another choice that voters need to make. Are we going to nibble around the edges of this issue, or are we going to really go for systemic, permanent solutions?
You would like to respond.
I think consistency is important, intellectual consistency and honesty. And John, you had supported the bond that council member Sawant had proposed when we were talking about getting $100 million in for affordable housing in the past. So, I would like us to, in the city of Seattle, raise above the usual political noise that we hear these days, have an honest conversation about how we can work with our community, small business owners, large business owners, our communities of color, folks in this city who want to stay here, who've lived and worked their entire lives here, and be welcoming and create the housing that we need for folks who are coming as immigrants and refugees, climate refugees now, and those who are coming for good living wage jobs, I say, as economic refugees. We can do that, but we have to work together. We can't assign blame or point fingers, pound our fists on the table. It means working together. That's why I have the support that I do, broad coalition support, calling for us to move forward and not just get stuck in the rhetoric or get sucked into the mud.
So, I'm not a lobbyist. I don't have the political connections that my opponent has. That's certainly true. I come from the community. I've been a neighborhood activist. I think that there's more that we can do to address these problems. But to suggest that, you know, that the bond is a new funding source, I think is disingenuous. Because at the end of the day, what we have to talk about here and what voters have to decide is, who pays for these things? Should the public pay for that? Because that's what a levy is, it's a tax on homeowners. Or do we ask for a corporate tax, which is the private sector paying for it? This is a big decision and difference between my opponent and myself. I believe the private sector should be paying more its fair share. I don't think we should constantly rely on regressive taxes and levies to pay for things because people are getting priced out of their homes.
And the term lobbyist is one thing that I think we should explore. I did spend 10 years advocating as a lobbyist on behalf of the Children's Alliance and for working families through the Washington State Labor Council, every day standing up to corporate lobbyists who were trying to scale back on our health care, who were trying to weaken worker protections, who were trying to take away retirement security. That is why I was there, standing for the rights of workers, standing up for immigrants and farm workers, standing up for the health care of everyone and retirement security. I have a progressive track record that has delivered in the halls of Olympia and in the halls of city council. That's why I think it's important that we not cast dispersions, assign blame, or point fingers, especially now. These examples of the folks that I have that are supporting me have seen me in action. Do we agree every day? No, but I know what it's like to not walk away from the table, to educate folks, to bring in the community, to make sure that we're moving people to more progressive positions. That's how we get good policy change done, and we can do that in Seattle. That is why I'm running for Seattle City Council.
Couple more of the hot topics. Key Arena versus Soto. I want you to elaborate and kind of drill down into where you stand on the current proposals being looked at.
I think that there's a couple of principles that we really have to stick to. One is that I support the Key Arena proposal, but we have to make sure that we're not spending public dollars on this investment. These are very wealthy sports, you know, projects that happen in every city, and I think we want to make sure that the public doesn't get left holding the bill. I think that we got to bring the Sonics back. You know, when I was a kid, I would go to the Key Arena with my dad and go watch the Sonics play. It's not too inconceivable to me that we could use the Key Arena again for that exact same purpose. But we have to make sure that we protect the public's dollars and that we have to do the best that we can to make sure that the Sonics can come back, but on our terms.
And how do you protect the public's dollars?
I think that by sticking to that pledge, by not making a public dollar investment in the Key Arena and making sure that we get these private companies to pay their way to make it happen.
You agree with that principle from what I've heard you say?
Absolutely. So, I have three principles. One is that this should not cost the public anything. Number two, we need to mitigate for the impact on our transit and transportation system. And number three, we need to protect our local industries. So, the Key Arena proposal is moving its way through. I'm interested to see how the proposal develops and what city council says in the next few weeks here. But we have to make sure that Key Arena is a functioning, profit-generating entity. This is a public good, and I live just around the corner from there. I love going there for concerts. If we can make it work and make it revenue generating, that's great. If the conversation continues here in Soto, we need to make sure that these two issues aren't pitted one against the other. I will continue to have those three principles. We have the only naturally occurring deep-water port here. We need to protect our maritime industry and those jobs and the commerce that it brings into our community, but I'll be looking for those three principles.
So, on this issue, I'm hearing a lot of similarities. Do you see any differences between your two viewpoints on the arena?
I think that the maritime industry and the workers who are down in our port know that I want to hear what they have to say, just as much as the folks who would have jobs at the Key Arena, constructing the new building, and serving the food and making preparations. So, across the board, I have support from people because they know that I'll be intentional and listening to them.
I think that there's a lot of agreement between myself and my opponent, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Now to the nation's opioid epidemic and King County's safe injection site plan modeled after similar sites in Vancouver, B.C. Not everyone is supportive of this idea. So, if you're a council member, how do you go about determining where to cite these locations? And we'll start with you, Mr. Grant.
So, I think we have to partner with the King County Public Health Department and also partner with the existing, you know, needle injection sites that exist in our communities. And those are the folks that know where their problems are. And I think we have to acknowledge that if we don't actually address this like a public health issue and stop criminalizing people, because this is not a criminal justice issue, this is a public health issue. If we cannot actually give people the opportunity to recover, I mean, we've seen in Vancouver, B.C., that it's, that program has saved hundreds of lives. And if somebody dies from an overdose, they never have that opportunity to recover. So, I think that that's what we have to keep in mind, and we have to focus on this as an opportunity to get people connected to services and saving lives.
So, my background's in public health, and as a public health advocate and somebody who's worked in that field for almost 20 years now, I think that it's a critical opportunity for Seattle to lead by example. While there's concern in our county, I think that we can move forward in the city of Seattle to create these safe consumption sites. But it's a matter of having conversations with our community. A lot of people have questions, they're concerned, they want to know how it will impact their local neighborhoods. And if we have those conversations now in a real and intentional way that listens to the community and helps address those concerns, I know we can create those sites right here in our own city. This is a matter of, yes, saving lives, but also a harm reduction approach that allows people to live and to hopefully thrive and get services and support one day.
So, it sounds like public hearings might be part of your process?
I think public hearings, also working directly with community members, talking to public health advocates, one of the most important things I think we need to do is locate services that are in areas where people can walk to. Look at the data, look at the charts to see where we have the most number of overdoses and deaths, and locate at least two sites throughout our city in those areas. I've looked at some maps, and I know that the Pioneer Square area, I know that the U District area has a lot of overdoses and deaths. I think these are preventable, and safe consumption sites can help us.
Okay. And lastly, gun violence. We're all still grieving with the families in Las Vegas, well, the families nationwide who lost loved ones in Las Vegas, and too many tragedies have occurred over the past few years. So, what do you do at the city level to address gun violence, which we also see every day in our own city?
So, I think that, you know, first of all, there is a greater call at the federal level, at the state level, to really hold the NRA accountable and really push for reform. But I think on the local level, I mean, we're running for a city council. So, that's an opportunity for us to kind of push the envelope here in Seattle. What I would like to do, and what I've already proposed, is to actually double the gun tax. This is a tax that was on guns and ammunition passed by council just a couple of years ago, but it's brought in about half as much revenue as it was projected to. So, doubling it would actually make sure that the Harborview Medical Center can make those critical investments in preventative research so that we can actually start addressing the issues that we see with gun violence on a local level. Additionally, what we saw in Las Vegas was a terrible tragedy. But the, one of the ways that we saw such a high death toll was that a semi-automatic rifle was made into a fully automatic rifle using a device called a bump stock. Now, I would like to argue that that bump stock is not a gun, and so therefore, it's not preempted by the state law on gun control. So, I would move to ban bump stocks in Seattle.
Which might happen at the federal level, we're still waiting to see.
Yeah, we'll see.
Ms. Mosqueta, do you agree with the idea of doubling the gun tax, which some have said is ineffective?
Yes, I've talked about that before. We need as much data as we can to actually address the problem. I actually am the only candidate in this race with the sole endorsement from the Alliance for Gun Responsibility. They've been working with me over the last few years, and I want to work with them as a city council member to make sure that we protect our community from gun violence, from assault, and from suicides. I will be working with them to make sure that we implement the initiative that was just passed to make sure that we get guns out of the hands of dangerous people, out of the hands of those who have assaulted people in the past, who are, have extreme risk protection orders. We have to get the hands out of them now, and the city can lead by example. There's two other things I'd like to do. Number one is the city has responsibility to do greater public advertising, education, to make sure that people know the responsibility that it takes when you have a gun, to keep them in lock boxes, keep them away from kids. But that's not enough. I will be advocating as a city council person in the halls of Olympia again, pushing to make sure that we get rid of preemption laws and allow for cities like Seattle to strengthen gun protection, so that we get guns out of libraries, get them out of parks, get them out of hospitals. We can do this here in our city, and with the Alliance for Gun Responsibility's support and the community at large, I look forward to bringing that on so that we can never see a tragedy like we saw in Las Vegas in our own city again.
And just out of fairness and in wrapping up this great discussion, thank you both for being here. Ms. Mosqueta, you've brought up a lot of different endorsements throughout this debate, so I want to give you the opportunity, Mr. Grant, to just name maybe some of the endorsements you're most proud of, just to keep things fair.
You know, one of the endorsements I am most proud of is former council member Nick Locata, and I'll tell you why. Nick Locata, to me, represents a voice that's missing on the city council. I, as a community organizer, somebody for the last decade that's been working in our neighborhoods to address all sorts of problems around affordable housing, you could go to Nick and you could say, "We need you to do X, Y, and Z." And Nick never asked any questions.